Let's get the show on the road here. Welcome to the March the 10th Leon County Commission Meeting. I'd like to ask Commissioner Maddox if you don't mind to kick things off for us here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have Pastor Greg James from Life Church International Center is going to give us an invocation. Pastor James, Reverend James?
Father, we thank you today for this time, this moment. We pray now that as we have come to here, we have come to sit in a place where men will orchestrate business for this county. We pray that wisdom be bestowed upon them as they move in the decisions that's going to upbill, uplift, and empower this your county. We ask now that your blessings be upon all that we do, that you would get glory out of it. This is our prayer today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. Thank you, Reverend James. All right. Based on what we have been reading and seeing and watching in the news for the last couple of weeks, we've asked our Director of the Department of Health, Claudia Blackwood, to come in and bring us up to speed and give us where we are. Thank you. Welcome, Claudia.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for inviting me to give you an update on the COVID-19 situation in Leon County. Since my first and last presentation on this subject, February 25th, there have been many developments and a lot of work to prepare and respond to the spread of this novel coronavirus. I'm going to start with state-level information from the Florida Department of Health and then talk specifically about what's going on at the local level. So yesterday, Governor Ron DeSantis issued Executive Order 2052 declaring a state of emergency. By declaring a state of emergency, Governor DeSantis is ensuring that state and local governments have the resources and flexibility they need to prepare and respond. The governor and the Florida Department of Health's highest priority at this time is slowing the spread of COVID-19 and ensuring anyone who is potentially infected is appropriately identified, cared for, and isolated. As a part of the statewide response, Governor DeSantis has ordered the following state agencies to take an active role in combating this outbreak. The Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT Secretary Tebow and staff from DOH will be hosting weekly conference calls with all passengers' seaports and public-use airports to provide updates related to COVID-19. The Agency for Healthcare Administration, ACHA, is hosting calls with the Florida Healthcare Association and the Florida Hospital Association to facilitate conversations regarding facility transfers and screening of facility visitors. Additionally, ACHA is providing ongoing support through constant communication with hospitals and healthcare facilities to provide information on CDC infection and control guidelines. We know they're working very closely with the skilled nursing homes and the assisted living facilities. The Florida Department of Education, Commissioner Corcoran, is working with schools, colleges, and universities to provide support for alternate learning opportunities in the case that campuses need to be closed due to COVID-19. The Department will be sending, the Florida Department of Health will be sending a press release every morning, seven days a week, to keep the public updated on what's going on. The Florida Department of Health is advising all individuals who have traveled internationally to follow the CDC guidelines, and that includes if you are traveling or have traveled to a Level III country, and you can check the CDC website to see what those Level III countries are. The CDC recommends 14 days of self-isolation upon return and social distancing, and that means avoiding going out in public and avoiding close personal contact, so staying at least six feet away from other people. And if you have that travel history and you become symptomatic, immediately self-isolate and contact your healthcare provider or the Health Department so that you can get in or you can be screened and tested if need be. If you travel to a Level II country or you take a cruise, travelers should monitor their health and limit interactions with others for 14 days after returning to the United States. And again, same thing goes if you become symptomatic, to seek a care from your healthcare provider or the Health Department. Do that by phone and let them know about your travel history. And this information is changing constantly, so we do recommend that you visit the CDC website, go to the Corona section, same for the Florida Department of Health. So last night, the Department announced a new case of COVID-19 in Broward County, and the Department, through an extensive epidemiological investigation, identified this new case as the third positive case of COVID-19 associated with Port Everglades in Broward County. Further, all three cases are connected to or employed by Metro Cruise Services, a company that operates at Port Everglades. So because of this, the Florida Department of Health is recommending that all individuals experiencing symptoms who have recently traveled through Port Everglades should immediately contact their Health Department or their healthcare provider and self-isolate for 14 days. The Department also recommends that employees of Metro Cruise Services at Port Everglades with any association to these cases self-isolate at home. And the Department is working with this cruise company to try to connect all the cases and do contact tracing. The Department is also working in close consultation with the CDC on that investigation. So the Florida Department of Health is actively involved in enhanced surveillance for respiratory illness that may be COVID-19. This is what we're spending a lot of our time on now at the Health Department. Epidemiologists follow up on any suspected cases that meet criteria for COVID-19 to arrange for testing when needed and monitor contacts of any confirmed cases if they occur. The Department will communicate regularly with the public and with our healthcare providers and EMS on COVID-19 and other respiratory illnesses. Everyone plays a part in lowering the impact within the communities and workplace. If people will take everyday preventative actions, we think this can really help slow the spread of this disease. That includes washing your hands frequently with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, avoiding close contact with sick people, staying home when you are sick, and this message cannot be emphasized enough. And that is difficult, especially for people who don't have sick leave or, you know, don't get paid if they don't go to work. Before traveling, we ask people to take certain steps, and that is to check the CDC's travel health advisories so that you know what the latest guidance and recommendations are for each country that you will travel to. I see a lot of smiles, and I know spring break is coming up, so I'm sure this applies to some people. The Department of Health has set up a dedicated COVID-19 call center for questions. I'm going to give you that number. It's 247. It is 866-779-6121, or you can email covid-19@flhealth.gov. And again, that's 247 that that call line is available. So what are we doing locally? Locally, consistent with the guidance from the Florida Department of Health, Florida's response to emerging infectious disease, we have asked the county to activate the EOC, and they have done so as of 8:00 AM this morning, from what I understand. This formalizes the work that's been going on since our last presentation. The Leon County Health Department has been working closely with the Emergency Management Director, Kevin Peters, and his staff, and they have been support, they have supported, and they are convening meetings for us with various sectors as well as with a joint information center. We are asking each sector to update us on their plans, to surface any questions that they have, and to let us know about any unmet needs. And then we're also encouraging them to work with their experts and their associations so that they can get the latest guidance that applies specifically to their areas. So those areas, those sectors that emergency management has convened on our behalf include education, law enforcement, first responders, hospitals and EMS, and the CDA is going to be included in that group, homeless, the homeless coalition and associated partners will be meeting this afternoon. There will be a call. Healthcare providers in general, that was a call that we had last Friday, and we're planning on scheduling a call with business in the not-for-profit sector, home health and medical equipment, and possibly assisted living facilities and skilled nursing homes. There have been conversations already with them, and they're being, they're working very closely with ACHA, so that may or may not be important for us to focus on. Our Public Information Officer, Pam Salisbury, is convening the Joint Information Center, and she'll be working with the county, the city, the hospitals, and some other PIOs as well, so that they can have coordinated messaging for the community and for our agencies. We have set up a COVID line. It's not a special number, but if you just call our regular number, 850-404-6300, you'll, there's an option, I think it's press one, but I'm not sure, and you can get to the COVID line and talk to somebody, and that goes until 5:00. And then after that, we ask people to call that 24/7 number. So Commissioners, this is an evolving situation. I really appreciate the opportunity to update you, and I will come back again if you invite me. I'll be back every couple of weeks to keep you posted or more, well, you don't meet every week, but whenever you're meeting, I can be here to update you if that's what you'd like. And of course, in between, we're communicating with Kevin, you know, daily, if not multiple times a day. So that concludes my briefing.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Claudia, thank you very much. I can imagine how busy you are right now. I know you're getting asked a lot of questions and to give a lot of presentations. This is really helpful and truly appreciate your leadership on this. I just had a couple of questions, just things that a lot of us are hearing in the news and other things like that. One is about information overload. There are messages coming in from all different places. I think our operational updates and really coordinating with your office and with the state, that is an exceptional kind of distillation of the most critical information. Would you really encourage people to look at those official sources? I mean, obviously, keeping up with the news is good, but is that really the source that people should go to to see in real time what the updates are?
You know, we always rely on what the CDC and the Florida Department of Health put out, because we know that's reliable, we know it's credible. It might not be as, come out as fast as, you know, some of the news stations, but it's been vetted and it's accurate. And so that's what we recommend, and we really, really appreciate Kevin Peters and his staff because he's pushing those, and you all, Matt Cavell, you're pushing out the press releases that are coming every day now. So that's a good way to get messaging out to the public.
Thank you. One other thing, and I fielded a number of questions this weekend, and I know there was an article in the paper today about events coming up in the future, and thankfully, all of our different organizations are really taking this seriously and I think want, looking to you and the state for some guidance. But one question I got from several parents who still plan to go on spring break, coming back, they recognize that if they were exposed, their family might not be a vulnerable population, but the grandparents might be, or other people in their circles. So I just, kind of gut-checking this, they were thinking of imposing a two-week time period. Grandparents are going to hate this, but kind of protecting their grandparents should they travel on spring break to someplace that has a little more higher risk of exposure. Is that kind of off the table, or do you think kind of limiting our interactions with that high-risk population is a good thing?
That's a great question. We have not received any official guidance about that, but I can see where the thinking comes from, the rationale behind that, and I can bring that to the, you know, to our planning group to see if they have any comments about that. It's not an official recommendation.
I brought it up only because I think, as you referenced, everybody's talking about spring break, and of all the comments that I've heard from the community, that one really resonated with me of just thinking about your grands and others who might be a little more vulnerable. Yeah.
Definitely want to self-isolate if there are any kind of symptoms at all, cough, fever, that you want to self-isolate and protect others.
Thank you. And the last thing, Mr. Chair, and Ms. County Administrator, we talked about this in briefing. I know you and your staff are looking at our HR policies and other things in case things get worse in Leon County, and I really appreciate that effort, and I hope we can encourage other businesses in the community to just think about this. If we get to that point where anyone has to be quarantined, we hope those workers are protected. So, thank you.
Matt, could we push some of the information out that Claudia's got on social media relative to contacts and numbers and way people can communicate? That might be helpful. Anything else? Claudia, thanks. I know it's been a wild couple of weeks for you, so hopefully it'll calm down a little bit.
We are very fortunate in this community. It's a very, I mean, everybody works together extremely well, and really, emergency management, it's, he's the best I've ever worked with, so.
All right. Commissioner Dozier.
Ashley? Is Ashley here? Right there, right in front of me. Come on up. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the second year that I have the honor of presenting the Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month Proclamation. And part of my thinking is, we just leave the update about COVID-19, is that it's not just older folks, but there are some of us that have challenges with our immune system, and we need to protect our neighbors as well. So I think this is rather timely. So, whereas multiple sclerosis, MS, is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting 2.3 million people worldwide, and whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society reports that in our state, more than 28,000 people are reportedly living with MS, and that the disease generally strikes people in the prime of life between the ages of 20 and 50, and the cause and the course of the often debilitating symptoms of MS remains unknown and no cure currently exists. And whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been committed for more than 70 years to a world free of MS, heightening people's knowledge about and insights into the disease. And whereas since 1946, the National MS Society has been a driving force of MS research, relentlessly pursuing prevention, treatment, and a cure, and has invested more than $900 million in groundbreaking research. And whereas funds raised through the National MS Society fuel 42.1 million and 380, forgive me, research projects at the best medical centers, universities, and other institutions throughout the U.S. and abroad, leading to many breakthroughs for the treatment of MS. And whereas stopping MS in its tracks, restoring what has been lost, and ending MS forever is the mission of the National MS Society and one that all Leon County residents should support. And whereas Leon County recognizes the importance of finding the cause and the cure of MS and expressing its appreciation for the dedication of the National MS Society has shown towards creating a world free of MS. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that the month of March 2020 be known as Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month, and we encourage all residents of Leon County to learn more about MS and what they can do to support individuals with MS and their families. Signed by the Chairman, all the Commissioners, and the County Administrator. And I will simply add that the last part about raising the awareness, we have phenomenal employees and people in our community who deal with illnesses that you can't readily see, and sometimes it just takes a little understanding and tweaks to jobs that can help these folks really live full lives in our community. And I'm joined today by Ashley Smith and Ms. Nikki Sargent, who is going to give us a couple of comments. Thank you both.
Thank you. Yes. Okay. Well, thank you again for doing the proclamation yet again and trying to get awareness out, because it's something that you can't see, and I have a handicap, D.C., and some days are good, some days are not, and you, we all get those looks from people who are like, "You're not disabled, so why you have it?" But it's a struggle. And one of the things that we're doing, there's the MS Walk that's happening on April 4th, and I just want everyone to come out, support, and just, well, let everyone know that you're giving us the support, because the MS Society, it does a lot for a lot of people that people may not know about.
Thank you. Yes.
Go ahead. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here today to present a proclamation for Destiny Church. Destiny Church is located off of Tower Road in the northwest part of Leon County. I got to know Pastor Jackson and many of his congregants last year during our 9/11 Day of Service for Leon County. We served the Lakewood Estates neighborhood. And Destiny Church has a huge heart for community service in this community and really did a tremendous job hosting us to help out Lakewood Estates. So, very proud today to welcome Ms. Brittany Jones and Mr. Keith Berry, and what was her name? And Mr. Rondalee from Destiny Church. Proclamation reads, "Whereas Destiny Church Tallahassee was founded by Pastor Clarence and Lady Dee Jackson on March 31st, 2013, and whereas Destiny Church was founded upon a spiritual vision and mission and a commitment to spend twice as much time in the community as spent within the walls of the church. And whereas Destiny Church has become a community service pillar of Leon County and the Big Bend area by forming partnerships with several companies and community service organizations to provide free clothes, household goods, and over 3,000 pounds of food weekly to those in need. And whereas Destiny Church founded and operates the Destiny Sports League, which has encouraged hundreds of Leon County children to participate in the National Football League's Flag Football and Cheer Program, increasing mentorship and youth health goals. And whereas Destiny Church has partnered with several schools in Leon County, providing thousands of dollars' worth of back-to-school supplies from its annual Back-to-School Bash, and has worked with schools to increase parental involvement and student progress. And whereas Destiny Church has partnered with local law enforcement and crisis stabilization organizations to assist children and families in crisis in an effort to restore broken lives and homes. And whereas Destiny Church has been recognized and received many honors from state and local government officials for its commitment to community service. And whereas Destiny Church continues to flourish, adding many new members over the past seven years and has aided in the spiritual growth and development of many. And whereas Destiny Church will commemorate its seventh anniversary with celebratory events from Sunday, March 29th through April 5th, 2020, now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that today, we recognize and honor the seventh anniversary of Destiny Church Tallahassee, dated this 10th day of March 2020, signed by the Chairman and the Commissioners and the County Administrator."
Good afternoon, everyone. On behalf of our Pastor Clarence Jackson, we thank you so much to the County Commission. Thank you so much, Commissioner Minor, for recognizing us for the seven years. As Commissioner Minor said, that that is our mission to really serve the community and not just our church, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with you all. Thank you so much.
Okay, next. Next, the Chairman will present a proclamation, recognizing April 1st as National Census Day. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd like to ask Cherie and everybody who's got blue shirts, come on up. Let's get the show started. All right. So we're here to recognize National Census Day, which is April the 1st, and I want to thank all the volunteers and everybody who's been working tirelessly. I've watched over the last couple of weeks and the months as people around town, looks like they're out there getting a lot done. So with that said, I will go ahead and read the proclamation. "Whereas every decade, the U.S. Census Bureau undertakes the monumental task of counting residents in communities across the nation. And whereas the collection of census data is an important civic duty that determines the allocation of billions of dollars in federal funds which are used for public services like schools, transportation, hospitals, and more. And whereas it is essential that accurate data be collected from groups of people who have been historically hard to reach in our region, including students, low-income residents, and minorities. And whereas the Leon County, Leon County and the City of Tallahassee found it to be of utmost importance to form the 2020 U.S. Census Complete Count Committee, which has proven effective at reaching our citizens in both 2000 and 2010. Whereas Leon County and the City of Tallahassee have identified the strategic communication efforts to increase response rates in our areas through the Make It Count campaign. And whereas data collected by the Census Bureau is confidential and protected by law, and whereas Leon County..."
Next, the chairman will present a proclamation recognizing April 1st as National Census Day. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd like to ask Cherie and everybody who's got blue shirts on, come on up. Let's get the show started. All right, so we're here to recognize National Census Day, which is April the 1st, and I want to thank all the volunteers and everybody who's been working tirelessly. I've watched over the last couple of weeks and the months, as people around town, it looks like they're out there getting a lot done. So with that said, I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas every decade, the U.S. Census Bureau undertakes the monumental task of counting residents in communities across the nation. And whereas the collection of census data is an important civic duty that determines the allocation of billions of dollars in federal funds which are used for public services like schools, transportation, hospitals, and more. And whereas it is essential that accurate data be collected from groups of people who have been historically hard to reach in our region, including students, low-income residents, and minorities. And whereas Leon County and the city of Tallahassee found it to be of utmost importance to form the 2020 U.S. Census Complete Count Committee, which has proven effective at reaching our citizens in both 2000 and 2010. Whereas Leon County and the city of Tallahassee have identified the strategic communication efforts to increase response rates in our areas through the Make It Count campaign. And whereas data collected by the Census Bureau is confidential and protected by law. And whereas Leon County and the city of Tallahassee support collection of census data that informs corporations on population statistics that determine where they choose to build businesses, housing, and more. And whereas census data ensures fair representation in the U.S. House of Representatives, and it is necessary for the accurate and fair redistricting of state legislative seats, county and city councils, and voting districts. And whereas the United States Census Bureau has deemed April the 1st, 2020, as National Census Day, which is a key reference day for the census. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that April the 1st shall be observed as Census Day in Leon County. Be it further proclaimed that we support the census and encourage all citizens to report where they live 51% of the year. Now, how can you figure out where you live just 51% of the year? Just curious. Okay. And with whom throughout the month of April. And it's signed by myself as chair, all of the commissioners, and the administrator. And with that, who's Cherie, you want to be the spokesperson here on behalf of the census group?
Thank you very much. And really, that was the best proclamation ever, because it said everything. I wanted to, but the message is simple. It's not just about account, it's about your representation and your funding for the next 10 years for schools, roads, healthcare, and so much more. So that was stated in the proclamation. What I wanted to add was, we have such a wonderful group of volunteers working in the census committee, and they've been, in the past couple of weeks, getting very busy, making certain that we're hitting groups that as staff, we just may never have thought of talking to or presenting to. And that's been a really wonderful collaboration between the public and private. And finally, the communications staff has just been doing an absolutely fabulous job.
Thank you.
Next, Chairman Deluge will present proclamations to the Neighborhood of the Year, the Neighbor of the Year winners.
Okay, Matt. I want to make sure I got everything out. Okay. This is, okay. And I've got Christine coming up. Right. Okay. All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. Now for the main tent. We are going to, I have the honors of presenting Leon County and Kona's 2020 Neighborhoods and Neighbor of the Year awards, which is our 39th annual awards program. 39 years. Now, I am going to invite, Christine, come on up, Christine Henry from the Council Neighborhood Associations to join me. While Christine has not been here for all 39 years, she has been here for many of them, and she's an active Kona member. Kona's instrumental in the recognition program, and I want to thank them again for their involvement. And at Leon County, we know their neighborhoods and our neighborhood leaders are so important, what makes our community a great place. And I'm a big believer, what the difference between a good community and a great community is the volume and the quality of the volunteers in our community. And frankly, the Neighborhood of the Year and the Neighbors of the Year is just that. So, and each year, we have the hard job of acknowledging just a few of those who really stand out in a crowded field. So with that, I'd like to ask Christine to share a few remarks about why this awards program is so important.
Hey, y'all. So, Kona has been doing this for almost 40 years with neighborhood recognition, and we have the austere pleasure of joining with the county and the city in the past to have the opportunity to recognize these neighbors who love, love, love their neighborhood, and in so doing, are loving our community. So we are always just so honored to work with our city and county partners, to be able to recognize their work, to recognize their commitment. And so with that being said, I'd like to invite our president Leroy Peck to give a couple of remarks, if you'd like.
Absolutely.
You know, it's a setup. Nobody should follow Christine.
Good evening. You know, Kona's mission is to protect, honor, and preserve neighborhoods. And to that end, this awards program showcases the best practices in neighborhoods, and gives those neighborhoods that are on their way up a goal to shoot for. So we, again, thank our partners, city and county, for participating in this program.
Thank you. And now, the main tent. Let's see. So what I'm going to ask is, we're going to announce who the small neighborhood is, the large neighborhood, the unincorporated neighborhood, and finally, the neighbor of the year. When I call your name, I'd like you to come up here, join Christine and I at the podium for a quick photo, and then we will have one group photo as we finish this. And I want to share a few highlights as we go through each of these. So with that, for the first winner, can somebody give me a drum roll? Come on, you guys. Small Neighborhood of the Year, Blair Stone Homes Association. Come on up. And this is a great example of neighbors working together to make our community better through street repaving, landscaping, and installing new water meters, lots of beautification projects, so that families feel more connected. Congratulations. Nice going. Stand right here for a minute, okay? Stay here with us, okay? We're going to bring everybody out. Next, in the category of, drum roll, come on, where are you guys? In the category of Large Neighborhood of the Year, Indian Head Lehigh Neighborhood Association. Come on down. And since this is my age neighborhood, I have to recuse myself, so can some, no. They worked hard to increase their resiliency over the past year. They helped elderly residents stay in their homes by providing cleaning, shopping, yard work help, and tech support. And they continue to host the popular Nini Fest with the 5K and Fun Walk. Thank y'all very much. Nice going. Stay close. And now, in the category of, oh, come on, did I lose my drum roll here? In the category of Unincorporated Neighborhood of the Year, Walden Place Association. Come on up. As the first-time winner, Walden Place has done a lot to increase neighborhood safety. They established a neighbor watch program, and improved street light in high traffic areas. Neighbors also volunteers many hours to clean up for beautification efforts. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, finally, stay right, stay close. And finally, drum roll. For the Neighbor of the Year, I want to recognize Ronnie Schaefer. Come on up. She has been a force in the Greenwood Hills community by organizing roadside cleanups, neighborhood gatherings for hundreds of neighbors, and finding new and effective ways to keep her neighbors informed. So if you'll join me in a round of applause for not only the neighbors, but the neighborhood. How would you like to do this, Matt? Come on over here, and we'll get some pictures taken. Come on over here. Congratulations. Thank you. Chris Quinn, it's home cooking when you guys win. Come on, y'all need to be in the front here. Rick, you want to be in the? Congratulations. Thank y'all very much.
Mr. Vice Chair, before we break on this, I just want to recognize before Grant walks out here, that at least three of the winners are from District 5. So, well done, District 5 neighborhoods. And I don't think Greenwood is, but you're close. Yeah, you're in District 3. I saw Commissioner Minor run down there, but we got three in District 5, so well done. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
All right. So now the moment we've all been waiting for. Herb Tila, who has been the only county attorney who I have ever known, tonight represents his very last county commission meeting, okay? We had a number of past county commissioners come in yesterday and recognize him. We had a very nice reception. And we have a proclamation here, and I just wanted for one to say that he's done this 1,730 times, okay? So I wanted to make sure that the last time kind of stayed with him. So I'm going to do this in a little different fashion, because my superhero is Batman. So I'm reading, come on down, Herb. I am reading the proclamation in Batman costume. Look, we could do this normally, we could do it my way. Herb, I just want to make sure I send you off in grand style here, okay? Whereas, whereas the Leon, it's really hard to see.
Oh, whereas, the Leon County Attorney's Office was established in 1990 with the board's hiring of Herbert W.A. Tila as the first in-house Leon County attorney. And whereas, Tila has provided invaluable legal counsel and advice to the Board of County Commissioners, the county administrator, and the county departments, as well as certain boards and agencies organized under the Board of County Commissioners over the last 30 years. And whereas, I can't do this. Whereas, through Tila's leadership as the county attorney, there are numerous instances of successfully defending or pursuing litigation, thus saving the county tens of millions of dollars. I heard somebody quote, "Hundreds of millions of dollars" the other day. Whereas, as county attorney, Tila oversaw the drafting of the first Home Rule Charter of Leon County, Florida in 2002, has worked tirelessly on the legal defront to protect Leon County's water bodies from damaging nutrients flowing downstream from the north, supervised the extensive task of recodifying. Now, that was fun, the recodifying thing. And your peer came in and questioned us on that. Remember that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, sorry. Recodifying Leon County Code of Laws in 1990 and again in 2020, and drafted hundreds of ordinances and legal arguments too numerous for any one single proclamation. And whereas, Tila's leadership extends beyond the county attorney's office with his service over four terms as president of the Florida Association of County Attorneys, chair of the city, county, and local government law section of the Florida Bar, president of the International Municipal Lawyers Association, serving on the Board of Directors of the Florida Counties Foundation, as well as mentoring dozens of Florida State University students throughout the law school externship program. And whereas, Tila's vast knowledge of the law is only rivaled by his equally vast array of jokes and holiday-specific ties for every occasion. Whereas, Tila's unique blend of professionalism, humor, and dedication will be sorely missed by many people here in Leon County and beyond. Now therefore, we, the Leon County Board of Commissioners, do honor Herbert W.A. Tila, dated today, signed by myself and all of my fellow commissioners. Please join me in a big round of applause.
All right, Herb, it's all yours. Anybody could have done this normal, but you know, we're anything but normal. We love you. Mr. Chairman and commissioners, thank you. It's been a pleasure. It's been an honor, and it's generally been fun. That's it. Thank you. All right, I'm going to take my back, please back up. Okay. Do we, so consent. Next up?
We have no items pulled on the consent agenda.
We have a motion for consent. Is there a second? All in favor of consent signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. That's consent. Citizens to be heard.
We have one speaker card on citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Ashton Henderson.
Anybody could have done it normal.
Absolutely. Ashton Henderson, 3265, Gramercy Place, Tallahassee, Florida, 32308. Great afternoon, everybody. Again, my name is Ashton Henderson. I serve as the Assistant Athletics Director for Student-Athlete Development and Leadership at The Florida State University. However, I'm here in a different capacity today, soliciting your support. Those of you who don't know, I'm a local product here. Went to the best high school in Tallahassee in Leon County, Lincoln High School. Thank you. I hear some roars out there. I understand. It's a great feeling to be a Trojan. But to that end, I'll continue with my remarks. I'm really grateful to stand here before you today as a local product of this great community in Leon County. I'm here soliciting your support and your help. Me and my teammates, I played football at Michigan State University quite a few moons ago, but with that, Spartan everywhere. We'll connect after. Go Green. There we go. Connections everywhere. To that end, that's what I tell my student athletes. But in the role I work and serve at Florida State, I'm in charge of, for all 20 teams, 500 student athletes, leadership development, career readiness, personal development, professional networking, and community service. So every single day, I'm on the forefront, on the grounds, empowering our student athletes to be better in every facet of their life. And for me being a former student athlete, it's important in the work that I'm doing in the community, I'm speaking to you about the inaugural Beyond the Gridiron Thrive Summit. Through the generous help and everything that this community has done, and aligned with us in our mission, our value proposition, and what we want to do for this community, we were able to provide a free two-day summit for young men ages 10 to 14, March 19, excuse me, March 20th and March 21st. We're going to focus on exploring the areas of essentially professionalism, and what that looks like for them, ensuring that they're wearing the right attire, all those great things that we, just little soft skills to help them in life, and also leadership, character development, as well as effective mental health practices, as things we don't necessarily discuss at that age. Why you ask 10 to 14? Great, I'll tell you. 10 to 14 is a very, very, very critical age in terms of the pedological movement, and what you're putting in their mind to understand that they can achieve, dream, and do anything they put their mind to. And it's incumbent upon me, for this community who's done so much for Ashton Jordan Henderson, that we provide comprehensive excellence for them, and understand that they can do anything they put their mind to, no matter what socioeconomic situation they come from, no matter where they live. But I'm here soliciting your support to spread the word about what we're doing, because we're really trying to change the trajectory of this community, one citizen, one young man at a time. So I hope you align with me. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, might I?
Yeah.
Ashton, if I was not sitting up here, I'd just say, Kenfolk, what's up? But Kenfolk, I mean Ashton, tell Coach Ham that I texted him today, and tell him personally that we congratulate him on being the ACC Coach of the Year. And Mr. Chairman, if I might jump the gun in front of Nick Maddox, just to say that Nick and I are both requesting resolutions to honor Coach Hamilton, and we just kind of put that out, you know, before we get to the end of the meeting.
I might exercise chair's prerogative in front of you. It's the best Florida State grant for y'all.
I think all of us is going to be down there. And to go ahead and jump the gun, too, because Ashton made a comment which, let me just say that, request ahead of time proclamation recognizing Rickards High School Boys championship as well. I don't know where Lincoln has been lately about that championship.
It's been a while.
All right. Thank you, Ashton.
Thank you.
Ashton, that's an amazing idea that you guys are doing. I think your experience as an athlete, just like mine, speaks to how important it is at that age, that you said, 10 to 14, to get our young athletes to start focusing more than just on the sport that they play, because the reality is, a lot of them are not going to make it to the level that we made it to. So any support that you need from me, I'm probably saying from this commission, you can get, Mr. Chair, actually, if we're, since we're asking for proclamations, we'll ask for one recognizing the inaugural summit that they're having for these young people. I think that's an amazing idea. Again, I'll help out any way I can. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd say Ashton is very modest. Several years ago, he, his name was floating with about seven former Michigan State University football players, athletes, as the greatest football player all time in Michigan State University history. So he has been lifted up, and people, alumni, whoever was voting, it was a national tally, but he was among that seven select athletes to be recognized as one of Michigan State's all-time greatest football players.
Thank.
You have to, we'll get together later on that comment.
I appreciate it. Without the infrastructure, that wouldn't be possible. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Pryor, we amend your motion to include the proclamation I asked for about the summit.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So we got one for the summit, one for Rickards, and one for Coach Hamilton and FSU.
So we got one for the summit, one for Rickards, and one for Coach Hamilton and FSU basketball team. Okay, just wanted to make sure I'm following here, okay. Any other citizens to be heard, Mr. Administrator? Okay, next, first up, general business. Oh yeah, we have motion for the proclamations, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 13 seeks your consideration, Commissioners pursuant to the county's discretionary funding ordinance and our fiscal plan policy to approve our FY 2021 maximum discretionary funding levels for outside agencies. That includes CHSP and special event funding. The item recommends an increase of $145,000 to CHSP with the creation of the new Promise Own category. This follows the increase the board approved last year of $100,000 to the CHSP, bringing that total to 1,445,000 for FY 21. Consistent with the budget calendar, Commissioners, this item also seeks your approval of special events, Commissioner training and travel, and the second year in a five-year, $100,000 annual funding commitment approved by the board for the Kearney Center to be included in the upcoming budget. Finally, Commissioners, the boards, based on the board's direction, rather for staff to identify opportunities to fund the newly created Promise Own category as well as the CHSP, we've included a list of line item fundings for outside agencies. In the analysis, we have included whether there is any statutory requirement or some sort of an annual obligation. In most cases, you'll see that there is neither, but we simply wanted to bring this to your attention at this time, should the board wish to reallocate any of these for the purposes of providing the direct services provided through CHSP. When, at the point in the process when you could still do so, again, if that was something the board wished to do. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have, Commissioners. We've got recommended options one through five, and then, of course, as you'll see with six, if there was any direction that you had on that one, we would welcome that at this time. Again, happy to answer any questions you might have, and I've got two speaker cards. First one, Courtney Atkins.
Courtney, name and, welcome, name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
Courtney Atkins, 1126 Lee Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida 32303. Good afternoon, thank you for your time. I'm Courtney Atkins, Executive Director of Whole Child Leon, and I want to start by thanking you for your longtime support of the Whole Child Leon organization. I also want to thank you for your leadership and support in convening a Children's Services Council Planning Committee. I think that's fantastic. On behalf of the Whole Child Leon Board and Staff, I'm just here to tell you how important we feel like the work we're doing at Whole Child is. You know, we're not a direct service provider, but what we do is we convene players around issues affecting child well-being. So we gather data and publish a Status of the Child Report, and that informs the work that we do. So we look at gaps in our system of care as it affects children and families, particularly young children, and we create partnerships and initiatives, we break down silos to try to address those gaps. We have a robust monthly meeting of human service providers and across sectors with education and healthcare, and we use these partnerships to create solutions to address some of these problems. A few of those things that I'm just going to bring to your mind today, we have established an early childhood education work group that we've taken four existing groups and brought them together to address access to early childhood education quality, and we have some really exciting opportunities that you'll be hearing about, a pop-up preschool and some other things to address that early childhood deficit. We have a Pediatric Behavioral Health Navigator project that we brought pediatricians, family practice doctors, and clinical people together to address the behavioral and mental health needs of children. That project started almost, not quite three years ago, and more than 2,600 children have been seen for pediatric and behavioral health needs, and they're appropriately referred to providers, and then that information is given back to the physician so that they can track these children and their progress. On Friday, and I invite all of you to attend, we will be doing our Early Childhood Developmental Screening. This is our 11th year. The screening does, is very comprehensive, it's for zero to five-year-olds, so we do vision, dental, social-emotional development. We even do a caregiver depression screen, and the children and families that come through this screening are connected that day, that moment, with appropriate services. So there's no call this number later, they walk into a room and they make their appointment with Early Steps or Capillary Healthy Start or whatever their needs are. So we see our role in the community is vital, and we're also doing a lot of work around racial inequity and implicit bias. We had a big community conversation in September, and now we're moving into sectors. We've had one in education, and on March 26th, we're going to be talking about racial inequities in community health. So I thank you, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Courtney, thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next speaker, Leslie Powell Boudreaux.
Leslie, name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
Sure, thank you. My name is Leslie Powell Boudreaux, address 2119 Delta Boulevard. I'm here on behalf of Legal Services in North Florida. Thank you for the time. I've met with some of you, I'm about halfway through a meeting with you, and look forward to the time that we have scheduled with, to meet with the rest of you, to share the value of the investment that you've made in continuing to provide civil legal assistance to low-income and vulnerable individuals and families within our community. First, I want to thank you, your investment is not taken for granted. We have been able to improve efficiencies, to improve the services that we're providing, and really continue services in a way that we would not have been in light of the reductions in state and federal funding that we've seen. The resources you provide largely go to support our work to help residents maintain safe and affordable housing. In calendar year 2019, with the additional funding that you provided, we've represented 384 people, which comprised 769 individual household members, keeping them in safe and affordable housing, critical to the stability of these families. The funding you provide supports the statutory mandate for these funds beyond the floor that's set by that mandate. From defending evictions, foreclosures, and improper wage garnishments, to supporting victims of domestic and sexual violence as they separate from their abusers, to advocating for the receipt of Social Security, healthcare coverage, and increased income. We will continue to be good stewards of the funds and work that we do to impact the community. Again, as Courtney suggested, I'm also here for any questions, and again, look forward to meeting with the others of you that we have time for.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I can, if you can take it up separately, I'm going to recuse myself from item number one for the appearance of a conflict after my conversation with the county attorney. I don't have one, but just to be abundantly clear, I'm going to recuse myself for the appearance, and I will participate in the rest of the options.
Okay, so we can separate it out? Okay. I've got Commissioner Minor and then Commissioner Maddox up in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a question for Mr. Shington Lamy. With regard to the CHSP expansion of the Promise Zone, can you just clarify something for me, and I apologize for my voice, but the, if the commission chooses to agree to the expansion of the Promise Zone, would the award categories and the criteria used to award agencies for the Promise Zone funds, would that change based on anything from last year? In other words, while the expansion of the Promise Zone area might increase, the actual awarding categories would not change at all from the year prior, is that correct?
That's correct, nothing will change regarding that.
Okay. All right. If we're going to take option one separately, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move option one.
We have a motion for option one.
Second.
And we have a second, okay? Any discussion on that as a standalone? Do you want to, how do y'all, how do y'all want to proceed? I've also got a couple of other speakers here, why don't we get through the speakers before we actually vote on it? How about that? Is that okay? I've got Commissioner Lindley and then Commissioner Dozier.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question about the United Partners for Human Services. Do we have a cost right now on the analysis that the Ask You Public Policy is going to be doing for United Partners? I see that you, United Partners, is asking for $23,750. This is on top of whatever we will spend for the Ask You analysis, is that correct?
That's correct, and we do not have a cost yet. We'll get that to you as soon as, as soon as we do.
Okay. I think that's something to consider. I'm not sure what the $23,750 is going to be spent for, is that just a typical administrative cost that we contribute to? Okay, I'll look forward to finding out what the cost of the Ask You analysis is, because it is kind of a, on top of, thing that we ordinarily don't do on budget time, budget systems, our budget processes. Thank you.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple of questions about the Promise Zone area as well, and Commissioner Minor, I think you were touching on this, although with your past experience, you know the categories intimately. We got a summary of each of these categories that would be included in the Promise Zone, so forgive me, Mr. County Administrator, if I'm repeating the question Commissioner Minor just asked. And actually, let me step back, Mr. Chair, for a second. I raised some concerns about the Promise Zone in recent meetings, and I want to be clear that it was not because, I don't think more attention needs to be paid for this category, for this area, but structurally, the process-wise, there just, there keeps, questions keep coming up. And I think it would be in our interest to kind of track some of these issues this year to make sure this is the most effective way to address 32304 and other areas within the Promise Zone. Part of that is the administration, the administrative cost for our agencies and our staff to do a second grant application. So, Ms. County Administrator, I know in the item you referenced not having to duplicate any information, but this would require two applications, and we know that that's not necessarily easy to put together, two program requests for grant applications, and then our staff and the teams have to review both of those. So we're adding $145,000 to a grant pool, and I think the overhead cost, you know, it may not be extreme, but we're putting added pressure on those agencies and our staff. So I understand you're taking steps, Ms. County Administrator, to address that, but if there is a way to kind of track that and get responses from our agencies this year, if there's any other efficiencies in the future, I would really appreciate knowing that, is that?
Absolutely, and I think the distinction there is that it only requires additional information if the program is applying for a separate program funding, just like they would have to do if one agency was applying for another program outside a category or in a different category. So it would be the same thing, so they would only have to duplicate their information if they were applying for services in different categories and that sort of thing. But let me get Shinton to come up and provide some clarification to that.
Correct, that is correct, what the County Administrator said. So if an agency is applying, this is consistent with what we do right now with CHSP. When they're applying for a program, that's what we fund through CHSP. And so for the program, there's separate document, information that's needed. So if they apply for a program in one category, and then they apply for another program in a second category, that requires a second portion of the application. They have to complete another application in another category, so it's all based on how many programs they're applying for.
So, thank you for that, Shinton, and serving on a team going back 10 years now for a CHSP team, I know and seen the reports, obviously, for the last 10 years, there are many agencies that will apply in different categories or for multiple programs, so they're already submitting multiple applications. But it's my understanding if they want to qualify under an existing program that they have for the Promise Zone funding, even if that program is similar to something they're funded for in the general category, they have to submit a SACLAN application, even if the program kind of looks the same for that specific population, right? So it could be taken from three to four applications, is that fair?
That is correct, because remember, for the application for the Promise Zone, you have to show how you're going to provide direct services to that specific area. So when you're applying for a youth services program in our youth services category, more likely you're talking about how you're going to provide services throughout the county. When we're talking about the Promise Zone, what we want to know in those specific 18 census tracts that's been adopted by the county and city, how are you going to provide services to those areas that the county, county, city commissions have determined is the most impoverished areas in our community?
Thank you. I'm going to support this, Mr. Chair, but I'm, I'm going, I remain concerned that with our limited funding, we are adding, we're loading up on the administrative side in hopes of addressing a problem that is being addressed by the agencies already, and that we may be able to assess that impact or incentivize it in a different way, but I can wait for more information for next year. Ms. County Administrator, you may want to kick this back to Shinton for this question too. The, the Promise Zone categories, and Commissioner Minor, I'm pretty sure this is what you were getting to, say, under family services in our item, we've got a couple of things noted as examples, rental assistance, utilities assistance, et cetera. This, the exhaustive list, this would include basic needs, food, emergency, sort of things of that nature, so it's broader than what's in our item, is that? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, it does, it covers all those.
Okay. And I see that we're going to have to tweak health a little bit because we can't overlap with FQHC funding. My last concern here, and you, this is not necessarily for you, Shinton, but the job training, that is critical importance in this area, to be sure, but it's also something that we're looking at through OEV. And I just kind of wonder about job training programs that are specific to this area and whether that is too narrow a focus for some of these job training programs that you have to go, say, too lively or someplace else. And, Ms. County Administrator, I'd just love to unpack that a little bit more as we go through this year and see what type of programs are applying for the job training. I wonder if that category could be refined or if we're supporting it in other ways. That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, we have a motion for option one. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition? Six oh, with Commissioner Maddox recusing himself. Okay, Commissioners, two, three, four, five.
And is that two through six?
Two through, yes.
Or, I mean, number six is not reallocation, or that was seeking direction on reallocation. Just County Administrator, if we just want to affirm what's already there, do we need to include option six?
No, only because those will come back to you in April. So we could, you could just act on two through five, and that would be enough for us.
Thank you. Motion for.
We have a motion for two through five. We have a second from Commissioner Lindley. Discussion, I'll, let me, I'll just weigh in real quickly. The Kearney Center is operating at a deficit, and their namesake is basically covering that. And I'm not here to say, let's plug the hole, I don't think there's a will for that right now. What I would like to just say is that I'd like to ask, and I had this conversation with the Administrator this week, that we get together with the city and the Kearney Center leadership and talk a little bit about what's long-term look like it, because we've got a very generous philanthropic benefactor in our community who's basically carrying the load in a big way, and to some degree, and although we participate at some level, if it, if he didn't continue to do this, I think we would all be facing a tough time. I mean, they're covering some things in our community that otherwise we would have to step up, bust the city, to some degree the schools, I mean, there's, it would, it would really open up a hole in our community. So before we get to that point, I just want to put that out there and say that we start having that conversation. I've had conversations with the Kearney Center people, I've mentioned to the Administrator, I've mentioned to the city manager, so it shouldn't be news, I'm just putting that on your base radar. Commissioner Lindley?
Yeah, I think it's worth noting, I mean, this $100,000 is for capital expenses, not programs, which are increasing right along. I was out there recently on a tour, and I know that, yes, they do have a beneficiary who covers some of it, but it is kind of, I doubt he's covering all of the excess that's being incurred in these times. I'd like to see us have an agenda item, come back with a really thorough examination of what is going on at Kearney, what's the current situation and what they foresee on down the road, because I think we're going to have to have an all-hands-on-deck approach in our community.
I would second that.
And so I would like to see. And so, I would like to see an agenda item come up when we can, soon as we can.
I've got Commissioner Proctor in the queue.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I support your empathy to the load, which Kearney Center is caring for our community. Certainly, I don't believe that, given models in other communities, stuff like the homeless center and the work of the Kearney Center would be wine item in some communities' budgets. I mean, serious wine items. As we look at the CHSP service categories, you know, not to denigrate, but I certainly believe that when people are, the first stop in leaving our Leon County jail, that the Kearney Center is the first step for many people who are leaving, and their doors are open, and food is made available, medical services is made available, overnight lodging is made available. And we think of the value of what that means, in particular, to a population that is re-entering, if you will, our community, we honestly can't, you can't put a value. We know that value far exceeds what we have on this sheet of paper. And relative to some of the other monies that we are spending, it's not like that we get a definitive report of accountability. What we, we sincerely know, without the report from the Kearney as such, that the work that they do is vital. It, it saves lives, and in the season of, when it's very, very cold, it just allows our community to be a lot more humane. So, exploring what more we can do is absolutely a positive step to plug up, not saying to plug up the hole, but it surely would help 32304, which, Rachel, is Kearney Center in 32304? Which it sits in 32304, is my understanding. So, it's a strong service provider, that if it's not there, the problem areas multiply exponentially if we're not there to help. So, I support our Chairman Commissioners in this regard, and I would like to see us not allow that philanthropic effort to have to cease and desist, because we did not do a little bit more or as much as we can along with the city. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, for bringing that to our attention.
Commissioner Lindley, you were up next. I, go ahead.
Could I just, I think I need to shut me off over there. I, I think that also the agenda item should consider or look into the businesses in the area, the neighborhoods in the area, because, because it's, there is a balancing act. Some of the businesses that are affected by the homeless shelter, not in a positive way, is a, is a responsibility for us to think about as well. So, I just hope that that agenda item can be all-encompassing.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that's a great question. I appreciate the agenda item. I also did a tour recently, and I, meeting there with former Mayor Gillum years ago when I was on the COC board, there was a lot of different issues and complaints from the neighborhood. The trash was a big problem, and the city, I mean, there's a trash can every 20 feet now, it seems like, in that area. It does look a lot better, but I think that kind of update would be helpful. Just to chime into this conversation, I, I think it's more than appropriate to get an agenda item back, particularly, I was aware of a possible funding request as well. A couple of the questions that I would like to see within this analysis, if it's possible, Ms. County Administrator, one of the things that we saw on the continuum of care board is that we want, we have to make sure all of our different service providers working in, in, with our homeless population, permanent supportive housing, and those types of things, if they are coordinating together through the COC, that could qualify us for more funding from the federal government. We have to prove that need in order to get that funding. And I think COC has taken a lot of steps to do that, but I want to make sure that Kearney Center is, is participating in that conversation. I know they've been on the board for a while, but there's, they have a different approach at Westgate and some of the other places that don't necessarily qualify. So, I just, unpacking that a little bit, I think, would help, because we want to make sure we're drawing down money from Department, or the HUD Department and others, that, that we qualify for because of the need. Secondly, and this is something I, I heard from Kearney Center staff during the tour, we've got an umbrella organization, CESC, and then we had the homeless shelter. And I really want to make sure we're focused on the homeless shelter in this discussion. And I, I have wondered over time if they may need to make some changes internally, and I think they may be reflecting on this, about how they're working on these different programs. The shelter is a basic need, an emergency need for our community. It's critical. But I, I think that that is really what we need to focus on in this discussion, and I think that's what, Mr. Chair, you and Commissioner Lindley were, were focused on. Is that right? Okay. So, yes, any other continuum of care and that relationship to make sure we have all the funding we could qualify for, and looking at their structure would be great. Thank you.
And I, I want to just follow up, ask kind of a logistical question, and this is really probably for the Administrator. So, tonight's the night we, we set the absolute max we can go to, right? As far as, I mean, we can't exceed this going down the road. So, I wonder is there, is, and is there a moment in time, do we want to open that door?
Mr. Chairman, my thought tonight was a night that we at least are setting a floor, not a cap or ceiling. If we get to a point where there have been, there have been, there have been seasons during budgeting where we, our staff has actually found additional money. There have been times when Doris Malloy collected more than we anticipated, and therefore, we're able to expand and to embellish. I think it's very early, given that we don't have the, the interpretation from Malloy on what we're going to get, if it's going to increase this year and so forth. So, I view this as a, as a, as a floor amount. So, if there's room to go up, that certainly gives us a basis to...
You want to weigh in on that, Mr. Administrator?
Sure. I'll give it a shot. The, certainly, the Board could appropriate more dollars for anything in the budget. The issue here is that this, what we're talking about, what's before you tonight is capital, which, of course, is not included in the ordinance that restricts operating dollars to the CHSP process. So, if the Board was discussing providing additional dollars for operating, that would be a policy decision of the Board to amend your ordinance to do so. If the Board wants to have that conversation, then obviously, I think the appropriate time may be to direct us to, perhaps, to bring back a budget discussion item, where we could introduce those policy items for you that you may wish to act on as well.
I guess my, the, the reason I brought this up was I don't want to let a moment in time pass here, and I don't want to have a conversation in a couple of months and say, should've, would've, could've. And that's why I'm asking from a logistical standpoint. Yeah, Commissioner Maddox, and then...
I'm sorry, this is, this is very on point. This agenda item says maximum discretionary funding, so in my opinion, it's not a floor. This is the maximum.
Right.
Even your answer to my question.
How do we slip this out of this category and put it in something else where we won't put a cap on it?
Let me try to clarify. We're, we're talking about two different types of, of dollars. What's before you tonight is the second, you know, five-year funding commitment for capital. The only reason that we can line item out the Kearney Center, as opposed to any other human services provider, is through the exception that you can provide them with capital dollars. If the Board wished to provide them with more capital dollars, you'd have no problem doing so. There'd be no restrictions on you. But under our, under the county's ordinance, irrespective of the maximum amounts that we're talking about here, there's a prohibition on providing operating dollars to human services agencies.
What the Chairman, Vince, is asking is tonight, the drop dead deadline, that if we wanted to raise this from $100,000, even though we've not done the homework to find out...
I'm, I'm, excuse me, I must not be, I'm not being clear. The, these dollars, you could, you could, you could increase that maximum amount of the dollars that we're talking about tonight, tonight, no problem. What, what the broader conversation speaks to is operating dollars, which is different. So, operating dollars, you have an ordinance which prohibits your ability from giving any operating dollars to human services agencies outside the human services process. That's an ordinance. So, all I'm suggesting is that ordinance would have to come back before the Board for you to provide policy guidance on.
Yeah. If we had to, we'd just have to go down that path.
So, if, right now, you're, you're, under our own policies, under, under the Board's own policy, right now, we're prohibited from providing any additional dollars to the Kearney Center outside of the CHSP process, except for capital.
Okay. I think that, Mr. Chairman, if I might, Commissioner Maddox, if you permit me, to say on point, that the Kearney Center's work cannot fall through. It needs to be, we need to try and buffer that work and to provide the kind of buoyancy that will keep it afloat. And if whatever the technical side of it is needed, we need to do the homework that the Chairman is asking about, to see what the shortfalls might be. Y'all and the city's heads get together, and we can't let this thing crash. We're not going to let them fall at all. So, that's the point that we're, we're trying to say.
And we could also, under the previous motion, simply bring you back the agenda item, which would include all of this in there. And the Board, then the Board could provide us the direction, should you wish to amend your ordinance or do something different, you could provide us the direction.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're all, I think we're flying a little blind, because we know there's a shortfall, but we don't know what the funding sources and, and what their shortfall is, so...
May I ask the county attorney one last question before he leaves and his career terminates?
Then I've got Commissioner Dozier.
This county attorney, I didn't, I didn't want you to work hard tonight. Are we prohibited from talking to Rick Kearney to personally, one-on-one, to talk about the situation? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks. Commissioner Maddox, did you have something you wanted to follow up with? I'm sorry, if you were...
Yeah, it was, it was just on point to, to say, I mean, I, I think I understand what you're saying, Vince, but maximum is maximum to me, and I think it covers all discretionary pieces of, of our budget, which is the totality of this whole item. And I, and I think what you're saying to me is that, at the time of the agenda item, we could bring this ordinance back to increase the maximum after we find out what those numbers are. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
No. This is, this is different. This maximum outside agency funding, in this case, refers to capital. If you have a restriction on operating, I think what the Commission is discussing is increasing or providing support for operating, which is different. All I'm suggesting...
No, I understand that, but I, at least I know during my meeting with the Kearney folks, the ask that they had was specific to capital. I would be more comfortable, just my opinion, maybe continuing the rest of this portion, because it seems like you guys are pretty clear how you feel on the maximum CHSP part, but continuing two, three, four, and five until after we see what the agenda item looks like for the Kearney Center, and what the ask is going to be, whether it is capital or programmatic, to give us some flexibility as to where we place those dollars. I just don't think you should set, set a maximum. Then, let's say they ask for capital, then you have to go back and mess with that.
All right, I've got, I've got Commissioner Dozier, then back to Commissioner Maddox, or then Commissioner Lindley, sorry. So, Commissioner Dozier.
Can I just, can I just on point? I feel like Elizabeth Warren.
You got a plan?
I have a plan. I just want to make it clear, tonight, all we're talking about is the second $100,000 out of a contract on capital expenses at the Kearney Center. Just, this is just...
Routine.
This is bricks and mortar. We agreed to it. This is our second year. We have five years of doing this, three more, period. I, I take responsibility for muddying the waters, for getting into the program piece of it, and you can share that responsibility with me, Mr. Chairman, because it was kind of your idea. But isn't that where we are? This is today. It's bricks and mortar, and what we want to talk about in a more thorough agenda item is program expansion, and which I suppose could include some more bricks and mortar, possibly, but essentially, it's the expansion of the needs out there. Am I right about this?
Absolutely.
Say yes.
Yes.
You know it.
Okay. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, in a way, feel like we're all asking the same question from different angles. So, I may be just repeating the same question. I'm going to take it from how I'm thinking about this. Option six, which, Ms. County Administrator, you said we did not need, because those agency contracts are coming back to us in April, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. This includes, that is the only category that is, doesn't have any kind of maximum, anything like that. If, if one of those agencies was asking for additional funding, or if you were going to make a recommendation not to have funding, all of that is more flexible, right?
That's correct, because they're, because they're aligned with departments, we treat them like a departmental request, right?
Right. So, all of that's coming back in April.
Correct.
But because Kearney Center capital funding is pulled out as a line item, that, that's where it gets into the options here, but it still is not a maximum. It just says maintain. And to your point, if we are contemplating additional capital expenditures, we can contemplate that in the future regardless of, yes. So, again, I just, I had to ask that in relation to the contract agencies, because I often think about Kearney Center in relation to those agencies, even though it is a capital, you know, commitment. So, just as we get into this, I, I think the analysis we discussed earlier, including the programs, if there is an additional request for capital funding, I think that analysis is important. I would not be interested at this point. It would have to be a big lift to waive the policy on CHSP and program dollars. We, we talked about this in recent years, and the way we really got comfortable with this and recognizing the importance of having a homeless shelter was because we could carve out the capital piece of that. So, I just wanted to kind of, with all this discussion, we have really held the line on CHSP, on the program dollars and our rules within that scope, and it's very rare that we'll ever question that or discuss it. So, I'm going to hope that Kearney Center, if they are coming with an additional request, that they think about those rules and think about the capital side of this. But again, that analysis, I, I think is worthwhile either way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor, you want to weigh back?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll just say that I, I'm willing to think outside of this particular box, and it means that the Kearney Center is, is redefined. I don't see any reason why homeless shouldn't be under Shinton's office, anyway. And if we place this under Shinton's office and deal, we deal with homes and provide people housing, and our housing office is what it is. Now, we're in a very lofty position here, because we have addresses. An address goes to who going to vote next Tuesday. I mean, an address counts on where your child goes to school, if they go at all. So, we're dealing with people who have no voices, don't even have a, a place to get a voter's card. So, housing, for many people, it, it may not be so respectable to us, but this is what they got to go home to tonight, and that we would streamline our, in some way, allow technicalities to disassociate ourselves from supporting the homeless effort, and for the man who is not signing incredible leases and put down the first two months and put down a deposit and put down a retainer and put down this, he's not asking anybody to go down to the city and drop some money down for deposit to turn on the lights? He's not doing any of that. He's just allowing people who ain't got that advantage to live there. So, if we need to schedule money and look at the homeless and adopt it as something that the county provides, health, safety, and welfare for literally everybody, then why not re-categorize what we're doing and place it under Shinton's office and put it under the, the housing unit? And, you know, let's put an adequate amount of money. We won't have to be dealing with this like it's crap. So, we cannot overlook people who are marginalized, and that's not what anyone here is doing. It's just that we can't get stuck in the weeds of how to service them on the basis of models of what we're talking about, really artificial for people who got to go to Rick Kearney's Center tonight to stay somewhere.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lindley that we bring back an agenda item. I think we've worked it out all that we need to. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, that motion carries. Now, we come back to the original agenda item here, which we have two through five, I think. And was there a motion? Is there a motion on, okay, there's a motion on, okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second for that? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay. And six is not... And six, if not, really.
We've got all the direction we need.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. So, next up.
Mr. Chairman, this is your last chance to tell me not to say anything.
Do I need to put on my Batman mask again?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this item was the result of some direction from the board to bring back an analysis of our lobbying regulations, and that's what this is, including a chart for comparison purposes of other cities and counties throughout the state. The bottom line, from our perspective, from the county attorney's office perspective, is we think that your lobbyist ordinance is not out of whack. It is consistent with the state statutes. It is generally consistent with all of the other definitional parts of lobbyists around the state. And so, there are tweaks that could be handled, but I don't think that your definition is wrong. And so, I've had conversations with Commissioner Minor, who is going to, I presume, weigh in on this in a second. But it's here to go, but you could make some modifications to it if you desire. We're not recommending any other than that you combine the exemptions and the definitional sections in a housekeeping more matter so that it's easier to find when you look it up.
Okay, we've got lots of questions, Herb. We're going to be here for hours on this one.
I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Proctor, followed by Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Linley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. County Attorney, this is your last official item that you're bringing before us, and we really want you to earn your last check. We really do. And I should be in line, and we probably have seven questions here. It was brought to me, to my awareness, that there is no allowance for electronic registration for lobbyists in that, in some areas, communities, that registering online has become so commonplace, be it hotel, be it airline, reservation making, applying for college, LSAT, you name it. Can we in any way accommodate and allow for electronic registration?
Yes.
Very good. I like to see this tweaked in the format of spelling out such allowances for those persons who would use that format of electronic registration. Thank you.
Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Linley, and we do have one speaker card, but go ahead. Go ahead, if you want to get...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm fine with having the speaker speak if you'd like to do that.
Sure, that'd be fine.
The only speaker on this item is Maxwell Hurley.
Max, name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
Hey, Maxwell Hurley, 117 South Gadsden Street. I'm here tonight as a lobbyist. You know, to be clear, I don't do PR. I don't do anything else. I only do lobbyists. I have a lobbying firm, and this ordinance applies to me. So, I wanted to give you my opinion on that. I think it's important to reflect on what the purpose of the registration is, which, in my opinion, this is not in the ordinance. It is to help inform the public about those that are attempting to influence public policy for compensation. And those last two words, I think, are something that gives some people some consternation at times, the distinction about whether or not it's for compensation. So, just from my perspective, what I have to do in order to register is, I'm in my office, I print something out, I fill it out, I get in my car, drive to the bank, park, walk in the bank, wait in line, get it notarized, get back in my car, drive downtown, park downtown, pull out my phone, forget my Apple ID login so I can get on Park Mobile, pay for my parking, and then I walk in the blueprint building, and I forget which floor it's on, and then I realize I left my check in the car. And so, you see where I'm getting with this. So, there's three components here. You have to notarize it, you have to print it off in person, and there's a check. So, you know, that introduces some real logistical problems. If it's after 5:00 PM and I have a meeting where I realize I'm going to see one of you all or staff at 8:00, it's impossible for me to register on time. There's no way I can register after 5:00 or on any weekend. And I do think this is an outdated need. I'd said this in an email to you all earlier, but if you look at Section 2-680, Print B, it says, and I'm sorry, just going to get a little wordy here, the ordinance says, "The lobbyist shall state under oath his or her name, business address, the name and business address of each principal represented." So, check, we're good so far. That's in the lobbyist registration. But here's where we have a problem. It says, quote, "You have to include the general and specific areas of legislative interest and the nature and extent of any direct business association or partnership with any county commissioners." So, that's not in there at all. There's no opportunity to do that, and at the minimum, what we need to do is update that form, which, you know, I'll forgive everyone for forgetting that it even exists, but it's probably a decade old. So, why should we do this now? You know, I tend to think that political interests are like vegetables, in that if you let them sit around, you know, they go to waste. So, once again, I'm asking you to do three things, which I really want to emphasize, requires an ordinance change, which is remove the requirement for a notary public, eliminate the fee, or at the minimum, allow you to pay that fee online, or three, and the most important part, three, which is allow you to do it online. And I think that is within the public's interest to provide transparency about who is attempting to influence public policy. Thank you.
Thanks, Max. Commissioner Minor, you want to pick back up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My aide and I met with the county attorney, and the county attorney designate at length to talk about this, and I think our goals here should be twofold. One should be making sure that we reduce any ambiguity or possible misinterpretations from what we currently have. And I agree with the county attorney when he says that there's really nothing glaringly wrong or lacking in our current ordinance with regard to lobbying registration, but there are some opportunities to tweak it. That's number one. Number two is making sure that we've got an enforcement process that ensures accountability for the lobbyists that need to register. If we have a simple accountability process with enforcement, we know that we're going to have full transparency because the lobbyists are going to register. So, with that in mind, a few things. Addressing Mr. Hurley's points, I have no problem, and the county attorney can corroborate this, I don't think the county attorney has any objection toward removing the public notary requirement from our current regulations. Now, what the county attorney can't do is basically speak on behalf of the clerk of the courts, saying that we can offer an online process. That's basically something that'd be managed by the clerk of the courts. But what we could do today is give the county attorney's office the ability to work with the clerk of courts and try to find some type of solution. I think that makes sense. I think it's reasonable with the idea that if we make it simpler for a lobbyist to register, more lobbyists will comply. So, that's one thing. The second thing is with regard to a clarification of what the definition of a lobbyist is. I think the simplest way for us to differentiate between a lobbyist and not a lobbyist is whether someone is being paid by a client to advocate for a position to a county commissioner or a county employee. From my discussions with the county attorney, that seems to make sense. To clarify what is currently in the ordinance, I think it might make sense for us to remove one exemption in Section 2-681, which basically says if someone can approach a county commissioner with an information-only request, whether they're a lobbyist or not, whether they're paid by a client or not, if we remove that exemption, that makes it much simpler in that if someone is paid by a client to approach and communicate with the county commission, they need to register first. It's that simple. So, and I'll leave it to the county attorney to corroborate this, but it seems to be a little bit simpler, and I don't think the county attorney had any objection toward removing that exemption. Third thing is I think it might be helpful for us to add a Q and A section to the Leon County webpage that describes a little more detail about what the ordinance means. We would need to put a disclaimer in that Q and A section, saying this should not be construed as legal advice. But I think that might be also helpful with someone that is a lobbyist going to that webpage, the same page they would need to go to to register as a lobbyist for more information about what exactly pertains to them and what doesn't. I think that'd be helpful. So, with those things, I'll sum all this up in a second, but I think with those tweaks, I think that addresses the point that was highlighted by the Tallahassee Democrats several weeks ago, where there's some ambiguity and a little bit of confusion among folks in this community about whether or not they should register, whether or not they should register. Second part of this whole thing is the enforcement process, and the county attorney and I had a discussion about that, and, Mr. County Attorney, would you mind kind of describing what the current process is?
No, Commissioner, the ordinance as currently written has two parts for the enforcement. One is an additional fee if you're late in making your filings. The other part is if you do not register as a lobbyist and you are supposed to have, basically, you refuse. It's an intentional refusal, or you don't renew when you're supposed to. Then, the enforcement is, I'll use the word cumbersome, but cumbersome anyhow, because we have made it, for simplicity's sake, a violation of our code that are in our general penalty section, which is Section 1-9 in the code. Now, what does that entail? That entails a lot more people than we have control of to accomplish that. It would require a citation be issued. We don't have that authority. We would have to get the sheriff to participate. When the citation is issued, it would be assigned to the county court. The prosecution of that citation would take place by the state attorney's office, so they would need to become involved, and we would have to get the clerk of the court to participate in processing that as well. There are alternatives, and we've discussed those with Commissioner Minor, and maybe you want to take it from here, but if you are at all interested in looking at those alternatives, then our recommendation of option number one should be modified to not bring it back for a public hearing on the 28th of April. It should come back for you to see the potential changes, and then, if you like them, then authorize us to advertise for a public hearing. I think a public hearing on the 28th would be premature, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
With that being said, one thing that the county attorney and the county attorney designate had mentioned was simplifying that whole enforcement process, where you don't need the standing attorney's office, the sheriff's office, and the clerk of court to kind of manage this whole process. There are other counties, namely Broward and Hillsborough, that have a more straightforward process. One of them involves the DOA, Division of Administrative Hearings, as a third party that adjudicates any violations. So, all that being said, I think what we probably want to do, in my opinion, is to do the following. I'll move to basically delay the public hearing from the current April date to a date that meets the county attorney's timeline for this, but also in that motion, do a few things. Ask the county attorney to explore, based on what other counties have done, a simplified enforcement process that might include DOA or something that makes sense, based on the county attorney's opinion, that will not need to involve so many agencies. That's one. Number two, remove the notary of public requirement. Work with, number three, work with the clerk of court on some type...
One second.
Number two, remove the notary of public requirement. Number three, work with the clerk of courts to see if there's some type of online registration and payment functions that they would be willing to entertain to make that process simpler. Number four, add a Q and A section to the Leon County webpage that describes and assists people that helping determine whether or not they need to register as lobbyists. And then, number, one went on, number five? Finally, simplify the definition of what it means to be a lobbyist by removing that one exemption for information-only communication, meaning that if you are being paid by a client to communicate and advocate with county commission or county employees, you are considered a lobbyist under our current definition, under our new definition. With all of those five points as part of the motion, that would basically give the county attorney a chance to work on this, work with the clerk of courts, and then come back to us at a later date with an agenda item for our consideration. That's my motion.
We have a motion.
I'll second the motion, but I have a...
We have a second. Commissioner Linley, and you're up.
Thank you. Boy, this is not exactly much ado about nothing, but it seems to me as much ado about not much. I would say 90% of the people who've talked to me about issues that come before the county commission, I talk to them over the bananas at the grocery store. It's neighborhood people, it's individuals who come and talk to us. The, you know, the idea of the sort of big-time lobbyist coming on the scene, I hate to think of you in handcuffs for failing to, you know, being hauled out of the house. But, you know, respectfully, we do get some official, professional lobbyists. And I, there's another item on the, I think it's Broward County, that I actually liked very much, and I think it gives a little more flexibility to this, which is to allow even a paid lobbyist to come to a county commission meeting, a public-announced meeting, and have three minutes at the mic to talk to us without necessarily being a registered lobbyist. In Broward County, that's allowed. It's someone who can just come up and talk to us in a public meeting. So, it's not a private meeting behind, in our offices or at the coffee shop or whatever. And I think that's infinitely reasonable if something comes up that they want to just weigh in on. And so, I would kind of like to see that explored as well. I think a couple of other counties even do it. I know Broward, and there might be a couple of others that also allow that, three minutes in a publicly-announced public meeting, you don't have to be a registered lobbyist to do that.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would accept that as a friendly amendment. I guess point number six.
Point number six. But I do think, you know, getting rid of the notary, the online registration are absolutely probably way overdue, and simplifying the enforcement. And I think part of the, is there something like a $25 fine? Is that what we have now? Is it $25 fine if you don't register? Where did that come from?
Basically, a double of the existing $25.
Right. That's really a warning, isn't it? $25.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, just to make you feel better, we've never had a formal complaint filed that somebody failed to register as they should have. I'm hoping we never have one of those, but at least if we do, I think we ought to explore, as Commissioner Minor suggested, a easier, simpler way of pursuing those.
Right. Absolutely. I'm happy with your, no, six. Thank you.
Commissioner Dozier, and then Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Minor, congratulations. I'm not the only one with complicated motions. I like all six points, including the addition there. And I really do think this is refining a number of things. I guess I have no anecdotes to prove this, but I would wonder, Mr. County Attorney, if we've never seen a complaint because it's just too hard to file a complaint. And we see people, someone was noted in the article, who realized he wasn't registered and quickly cured that and came in and registered and, you know, apologized. So, I do wonder about that piece of it. I don't know if you were about to make a comment, Mr. County Attorney, on that.
It has, it's been up my experience that if you point out that they have failed to do so, they immediately do so, and so, that's why there's never, you know, been a formal complaint to process. It's just, you know, by the way, you should have registered as a lobbyist. Go do so when you can tomorrow or the next day, whatever. So, it has worked out over the years that way?
It has worked out over the years that way, and that's good, but I think our effort here is to try to remind people and get them to register before they come and sit down with us.
Yes.
So, I think this process is a good one to kind of look at a more efficient and effective enforcement process, so maybe it's not just, you know, reminding them and forgiveness, but there is maybe even a tiered penalty, whatever it might be. So, I like the direction we're going. Two quick questions. The Q and A section, I was thinking about this after our discussion at Village Square last night, when this question came up for the moderator, for all of us. There is absolutely a right to petition our government, and a lot of the comments we're all talking about, you know, whether it's over the bananas at the grocery store or, as was pointed out in the article, and last night, we have a community with a lot of lobbyists and other professionals who may talk to us about neighborhood issues or something like that. So, I would love to see some way without muddying the water... So I would love to see some way, without muddying the waters, in this Q and A, highlight, you have the right to petition your government. And we support this right. And then, if you are paid, this is what you have to do. So just generally, I think it's in our interest to kind of put that out there first. I do think there are some citizens who start to question whether or not they should be registered, if they're representing a group. We know they're not likely paid for that, but that, I think that might help. So I don't know if that, I don't think it needs to be part of the six points here. I think that's just, you know, we can see what staff develops on this. I do have a question, Mr. County Attorney, to clarify. I think I understand and I like the direction about the information provided to commissioners or staff. So if I'm looking at this right, is that number six listed under Section 2-681 of the Code? Is that persons who may, this was the exemptions from the lobbying. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So people who make purely factual information requests, and it's not just request, but it's providing that information, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Trying to fit this in kind of what our experience is, this could be a consultant working on a development or something like that? Does this extend to professional consultants like engineers and design firms? Or is it someone paid to kind of navigate the system and therefore might interact more on a political level or the decision-making level? And I just want to, and this may just come in the analysis, but an engineer who's working on a project, I don't necessarily gets into the advocacy role, and that's mostly working with staff. I don't think we necessarily hear from those folks much unless it's reporting out or something else. But someone who's kind of hired to manage a process, those are the people that I've seen come and meet with us and meet with staff as we're working on a particular development or something. Is that, am I thinking about that correctly?
Yes. The distinction between advocating for, to take a position, so I want you to vote yes on this project, as opposed to giving you so-called factual information, which is also endeavoring to influence your decision, it became sort of blurry between those two.
Yes.
And so with Commissioner Minor's fourth or fifth point, we think that just saying, if you, if you're being paid to approach a county commissioner to influence their decision-making, whether I ask you to vote yes or no, that should be sufficient to trigger it.
I like what you just said, and you used the phrase, approach a county commissioner. So just in the analysis, when it's brought back, I would love to see, you know, if there is a distinction with professionals who are working on architectural view, engineering, something like that, design elements, it seems like that is a very, who are communicating with staff. That's working a project, and it's not necessarily communicating with the commission, correct?
Well, true. You're communicating with employees too, but you're talking about, I need to redesign the stormwater pond.
Yes.
To meet, you, you staff told me it wasn't sufficient. I need to fix that. I don't believe that's trying to influence you. I'm just trying to talk technical information so that I meet your code.
Okay. That's great. I just raised that point because you can see someone's advocating for a project because they want a reduction in our stormwater capacity or something. I think that is a little different, and I want to make sure our language is clear. I like the direction we're going.
Okay. Commissioner Minor.
Mr. Chairman, yes. Exemption number seven right there talks about when a county commissioner or county employee initiates that communication. So if you're, if you're seeking information from an engineer, they don't need to go out and rush out to register before they can talk to you. So if the county commissioner or county employee initiates that conversation, request information from that engineer or whoever, then that is exempt.
Commissioner Minor, I'm talking about people who are coming to Department of Place or building an apartment to work on a project. So I think, I think we got it. We'll see that distinction.
And we can see how the agenda item comes back, but as, as the county attorney said, them providing information to us when there's a certain context can, even inadvertently, be an advocacy for one position or the other. And so that's one thing that we'll need to talk about with the agenda on when it comes back onto us.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner Jackson, could you recite the 22 points of this motion? Does that, do you understand? Have we spelled this out well enough? Okay. I'm going to assume that you read it pretty clearly, so I'm going to go with that. We have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition? Motion carries. Good work. We have one more. I'd like to knock this out if we can.
Well, this is a quick one. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this item seeks your authorization to amend the emergency management budget to perform scheduled upgrades of the 911 system. Funding for these projects are, is available in the E911 budget balance for these capital upgrades. We do not have any speakers on this item.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Yes, sir. Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, in light of what Ms. Blackburn presented to us, coronavirus, Vince, will this new system that we are adopting have the flexibility to move expeditiously with respect to updating and being adaptive to very recent information that we're able to inform the community about, issues such as Corona? How capable will it be? Or will it be slow motion? I know you hadn't factored that, but tell us how this would integrate with what she said and CDC, ACHA, and all of those sources.
Well, the basic answer is that we would generally not use this technology, this hardware or software to do that type of communications. We use other tools to do that, except, and I just say with the exception that if we got into a much more evolved phase and we got into like reverse 911-type communications directly with citizens, then this type of technology would be used. But for the most part, it would be different technology. But, but for the reverse 911 and that sort of thing, this would be the technology, and it would be adaptable to deal with those real-time situations.
Okay. Very well.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition? Motion carries. I would suggest, in the interest of time, why don't we knock off Commissioner comments now before we come back for a public hearing, if that's acceptable? And I'll wait, because I know Herb's got a long speech. Commissioner Proctor, something for the good of the order?
Sure, sure. Just thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to request a proclamation for the Talke, when the electorate youth tour delegates that are going to Washington in June. And this is always an annual event, and I asked the board to make a motion that we would give proclamation to the Talke, when the electorate youth tour that's going to Washington.
I would second that. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposition? Thank you.
Secondly, Mr. Chairman, a few weeks ago, I asked our staff to sort of investigate and give our commission an update on the building out back. A little noise was made after I made that inquiry, and I've not seen one teaspoon of dirt turned over since making that request. I'd like to reignite that request and see if, is it really dead? Is it going to be, this project going to be exhumed? What's going on with that project? Because from the timeline that we were told that something had cleared up and all the wings had been satisfied, but I'm not seeing any movement. I'm just hopeful that staff can check that again and let us know if this eyesore is going to.
So is that a status report or a status report on what's going on with the building? Would that meet your requirements?
Mr. Chairman, secondly, I think I mentioned at last meeting, and unfortunately, I've not had enough time to explore, but a department, Leon County Department of Elder Affairs is something which I think its time has come. We have a significant age population. I'm well aware, as you are, of a council which may go to the ballot to seek children's services, which will be funded to, I've been told, $7 to $8 million. And if there are needs that we're going to consolidate with specialized funding for children's services, I definitely believe that there's a special population of elders who do not have a stream of funding to the likes of $7 million in our county. But I think that, I'm not saying that the services are disjointed. I just think that we do have in our state Department of Elder Affairs, which I think was created under, it sounded like a Democratic governor, Department of Elder Affairs. And I think that we could mimic and mirror that here at the county level. And I'd like to, if this commission is willing to explore, to have that idea looked at in terms of other communities that have such, and you hear these things at NACO meetings and places like that. So I'd like, if there's a motion for staff to research it, tell us what it might take to do something like that.
All right. We have a motion. You want to repeat the motion, Commissioner Proctor? I think there's some.
Motion for staff to, to investigate, explore Leon County establishing a Department of Elder Affairs. And that results in part from the difficulties, complexities of dialing the phone number, using prompts to find anything out from the Praiser's office. The tax collector is becoming complicated to go online to find out how to engage your county. I know we can call the 5300 number here, and someone picks up a human being. That's not true across the county. And I think that to the extent that we can simplify those who come from a generation where they call and talk to a human being live would help, as well as understanding the multidisciplined needs of citizens who have aged in our community. So those were the thoughts that this commissioner, over time, his thought would be appropriate. So I made that motion.
We have a motion. I don't know that we have a second. All right. Motion dies for lack of a second. Anything else? Commissioner Proctor?
Finally, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I wanted to make sure that citizens and constituents who are in the, in the Springfield area, there's a lot of offers on property that people believe are good offers. And when people are trying to, in an area that's gentrifying, there's a lot of activity in office to senior and elderly citizens with offers to purchase their properties. And I'm well clear that a number of people are not savvy with respect to real estate terms and values and all of these things. And I think that when you're looking at Springfield, Frenchtown area, and a lot of elderly people who have lived there and never done real estate transactions, I am asking for the public in that area, the bond community, a lot of speculation is occurring, and I imagine South City. I know that we don't have a county office that deals with helping people who have received offers, and they don't know where to go, what to do. But in an area that's quite, being quite reviewed for purchasing properties of these elderly people, I just want to say to the public, call my office. That's 606-5371. If you live in District 1, if you live in 32304, if you live in an area and you're elderly, you don't understand what's going on, call my office. Don't want you to get swindled, don't want you to get taken advantage of, or be signing those sheets of paper that you don't know what was being offered. That's around lose your house, lose everything you worked for because there's not been clarity. I know that gentrification is ongoing, and people who've never been offered $25,000, and it seems like a lot, but it may not equal a come to a fair market value. And I just wanted to put it out there today that I'm asking all of my constituents to please weigh in with your commissioner, our office, that we might help you to understand what is, what is a real value in your property. I thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor.
And congratulations to Herbert Teela. And Herb, we wish you much success in your next career. And I would say go Notre Dame, but Commissioner Maddox might get a little upset with me, but much success to you.
Commissioner Lindley.
Just to echo that, I'm going to really miss you being here, Herb. It's been a pleasure in my almost eight years, which pales compared to your 30, but I can't remember a time when we've ever asked a question when you haven't been able to come up with chapter and verse so convincingly and with such authority that we always believe it. So I'd say that's a great attorney.
No comment on whether it's right or not, but with authority.
I couldn't, I couldn't let it go too gushy. Great Red Hills Horse Trials event this past weekend. Though I think the crowds were a little bit smaller, I don't know if it was the coronavirus alerts or, it was a little colder than usual, but it was a really nice event. I'm glad the county supports that for the many, many thousands of tourists that come, the visitors that come to Tallahassee for that. Thanks, Carrie. I know you were instrumental in that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindley. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Washington Square status report would be great. Ms. County Administrator, if we're going to, I don't know if you got a, if we got some clarity on that, but I'm wondering what the status is outside of the development itself? I mean, at what point, are there any triggers that would open this up for other private sector investors or, let's just say a convention center? No, I'm kidding. Something like that. I, do they just get to sit on this forever? Or are there some triggers or something that might allow this space to move forward in the future? That would be my biggest question on that, if we're bringing back a status report.
Yeah. There's any action to be taken that we can do? What are our choices here?
I mean, I could understand if the company is not sharing a lot of information right now. I don't know if that's true or not. The city's been working with them, of course, but that's my bigger question, exactly. Yeah. We've had a series of great events. I'm glad you mentioned Red Hills. It was beautiful. Apple Tree Regional Park, the groundbreaking and the new stage and everything. Mr. Cherry did a great job, Carrie, great job, and county administrators as well. It was a good event, very windy, and just a gorgeous day. You could really see what it's going to be like out there, not just for cross-country, but also for the rest of the parks. This is really exciting. Lincoln Women Voters 100th Anniversary, Commissioner Minor, your distinguished wife did well. She was one of the women representing suffragettes. They were in costume and really telling the story, and I look forward to working with them as we go through this year and focus on 100th anniversary of women getting the vote, just as everyone's voting this year, I have no doubt. The census, other things, I mean, this is, we've got a lot going on right now, so I really appreciate everyone's efforts on that. And with that, I think, I know we mentioned it before when Claudia was here, but the updates, Ms. County Administrator, from our emergency management team have been great. We shared your latest update in a newsletter today. We're getting some good feedback, and just in general, it's really helping us, I think, direct people to the right places to go. And I just wanted to say that we're looking at our spring festival season, and I know there was an article today about springtime and others looking at this. I am truly hopeful that we can see all of these things go forward, but I know that you all will be working closely with those organizations and supporting in whatever way we can. So that's just, you know, there was a world of shout-outs, and we're not going to see each other for a month. Ms. County Attorney? Herb, your beautiful family flashing up there on the screen and getting to see them yesterday was really special. Particularly loved the picture with all the current former commissioners. That was a nice moment. And you said it in your comments, that the array of people that were here, the different types of people that were here to celebrate your retirement is, in the comments that were made, a really amazing indication of how much you are valued here in our county, but also around the state. So thank you for your long service and enjoy retirement. I hope you truly do get some retirement, even if you're signing up with someone else. So congratulations. And we haven't said it much, but Chastity Osteen, I am going to look forward to seeing you up on the dais at our next. to look forward to seeing you up on the dais at our next meeting, and you've been here with us for a while now, you've got a great team with you, and just really appreciate all your dedication and commitment to the county already, and looking forward to having you join us next month, and this is really the last thing, Mr. Chair, I took a walk at Lake Henrietta yesterday before our Village Square meeting, I really appreciate doing that when I'm in various parts of town, just our county parks and other stuff do a great job, Mr. County Administrator, it's my understanding that the city's doing a lot of work in Griffin Heights and other neighborhoods, looking at stormwater issues, I have gone back in that neighborhood and seen some of the challenges and the debris that's built up as the water flows down towards Lake Henrietta, am I on the right track here?
Yes.
So, and we noted this on, when we did the Springs Tour with Jim Stevenson several weeks ago, I mean, this happens on a regular basis, I would love to know more, even if it's just a status update, about what the city's doing, if we're, how we're collaborating, I should say, to really look at the contamination that's coming down, I appreciate their efforts, but I just wanna know a little bit more about how we're working together, the stages of that process, and this has a big impact on Muncs and Slu and everything else that we're working on, so is that acceptable?
Got it.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Good, thank you, Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Jackson.
Herb, congratulations, good luck, Godspeed, Chastity, I guess you have some work cut out for you, it's last official act, let's do, make sure there was some things left, so thank you, Herb, for your service, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Maddox.
Herb, thank you, man, you've been a good, solid legal guy for us up here, we appreciate your service to the county for the past 35 years, Chastity, we look forward to you sitting on the dais, it looks like one of the first things you're gonna have to tackle is this lobbyist ordinance, so good luck with that, I know you've had some good time with the county attorney as well as their staff to get everything prepared, and I have full confidence that you will be ready to represent once you get up here, Mr. Chair, good meeting today, this is the first time, probably the last time, whoever's seen a superhero give a-
I'm not the only one anymore.
You did do that, you did do that, I'm not sure, is that superhero or not?
Well, according to Mary Ann, I can't say anymore, forgive me, Commissioner Lindley, that Leia isn't a superhero, but yes, Jedi is a superhero, it's on the same family, but I am glad I'm not the only one who's sitting in costume at the podium there, so-
But you didn't, you didn't-
You're projecting my superhero, you know.
You didn't get so much into character that you were in the voice, though.
I did not, but I did wear a wig, so, all right.
Well, Mr. Chair, good meeting, man, look forward to ending up after our 6 o'clock, 5 o'clock break for public.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, two things, we spoke with the Carney Center, Audra Peoples today, and this community, whenever we have a natural disaster or a crisis, one thing that's great about Leon County and Tallahassee is that we've got people here that just rise up to the occasion and wanna do whatever we can to help others, the Carney Center is in dire need of supplies related to the coronavirus, so to the extent people out there are listening right now, if you would like to, they could really use hand sanitizer, 60% alcohol or greater, hand wipes, soap, or toilet paper, you can donate it at the Carney Center, or if you're a organization, a faith-based organization, business, whatever, you wanna have your own drive, contact the Carney Center, Audra Peoples, and she can coordinate pickups for you, I know some of the supplies are limited, some of the grocery stores have low stocks on some of these items, but that just means the Carney Center needs it all the more, so as some of these supplies come back into our stores, if you have the chance to buy them, make a donation to the Carney Center for those goods, I know that they'd really appreciate it, and then the second thing, Herb, I had the pleasure of having a meeting with our county attorney and our county attorney designate today in the same room, and I saw the, you know, the 30-year experience, and then the experience from Chastity too, and the two of them working together on this lobbying regulation stuff, so it was really, really something, and it was, it was bittersweet to see Herb probably meeting with me for the last time, maybe, maybe not, actually, maybe not, but, and then it was great to see Chastity just diving in, and I know we're gonna be well-served, I can tell you, she's gonna do a great job with us, so Herb, we're really gonna miss you, more than you know, we're gonna miss you, so, thank you.
Yeah.
One important thing I forgot, March 2nd, my little man turned one, so I'm going to go on record telling Nicholas J. II happy first birthday.
Wow, nice birthday.
Mr. Chairman, I omitted something, too.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I omitted asking the board for a resolution honoring Willie and Carrie Pittman on Saturday through the Allen subdivision, the state of Florida is going to do an unveiling of a bench there, marking their support of female students who went to FAM C and FAM U back in the day, and their community asked a resolution recognizing it.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, any opposition?
Secondly, I'd like to send a shout-out to Ms. Rashida Jones, she's gonna be married on Saturday, Rashida is a student, went to Charles, graduated from McClay, went to a great university in Philadelphia named Temple, she graduated with a pharmacy degree, doctorate, is getting married Saturday, and I wanted Rashida to know, we're saying congratulations, and then finally, we've already addressed Coach Hamilton in the Rikers High School, so that concludes my request, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, Counselor?
No speech, I just wanted to thank the commission and all of the staff for the really embarrassing, but touching ceremony that you all put on yesterday afternoon, it was really, it was really nice, and it was nice to be able to have my family, to be able to attend, even though one of my sons had to attend in his duty uniform for the evening, but, so that was great, so thank you to the staff, Vince and Alan, and the people in my office, and Stephanie who organized all of that, and the commissioners for having participated and helped put that on, it was really touching, you know, you don't look forward to something like that when you start your first day in office, which, by the way, just so you know, my first day here on the job, I was trapped in the elevator in the rotunda area for an hour, thus missing my meeting with PA and the chairman at the time. So, I wish you all well, thank you for 30 years, it really has been, by my rough estimate, counting the city of Delroy Beach, 1,730 commission meetings that I have sat through, these are so much better, my ones in South Florida started at 7 o'clock at night, and-
And how many Batman appearances did you have?
One.
There you go, see, I rest my case.
So anyhow, I wish you well, I know my folks will feel free to call me if they have questions like, why in the heck did you ever do that in 1997, that kind of stuff, so, thank you, you'll see me around, as I mentioned a few meetings ago, you'll not see me at the lectern advocating on behalf of a solid waste collecting company, so that's it, thank you again for 30 wonderful years of being your lawyer, and it just, it's really been a pleasure to do that, I can't think of another job that I would rather have done during this entire time, other than what I did, which was be your lawyer, and watching my family grow up in Leon County, and you know that they like it, there they are up on the screen, all of them still live here in Leon County, and so they found it a wonderful place to be, too, so anyhow, thank you, and we'll see you around.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner.
Three quick things, I'm gonna save the best for last, with Herb, but I mentioned to you, actually, Claudia Blackburn mentioned to you earlier that we have activated the EOC, so thanks for the feedback on the updates that we've been giving you, as I mentioned, Matt and Kevin and the team have really done a great job there, and I was going to say that I included one of the updates, that very soon thereafter, that update format was taken by a lot of folks in the country and reproduced, and they said, hey, you guys got it, we're gonna use that, and so a big shout-out to them, but the EOC is activated currently for the purposes of the FDOH Joint Information Center, and we'll keep you posted on that, big, big news that I'm excited to share with you, almost right off the presses, as I shot you a quick email to this effect, commissioners, for the second year in a row, we have been named the South's Best, city of Tallahassee and Leon County, really reflects a lot of the good work of so many citizens in this community, and leaders and neighbors, and certainly Leon County government, working with all of our partners, you'll be happy to know that we are the only Florida city on that list, and we are, we're also named one of Florida's best college towns, not surprisingly, and perhaps, which may be surprising, is that Four Rivers was named Best Barbecue, so there you go, we're right up there on the list, but again, this is important, and this does put us in the spotlight to, I had to correct myself, 23 million people with respect to Southern Living's distribution, 23 million people, so, again, this is big, and just a really big shout-out to Carrie Post and her team for their efforts in coordinating and promoting this effort, can't say enough about that, and so with that, Herb, I've got the really tough part, is I've gotta say nice things about you, I could put a period there, but I won't, but I'll put a comma there and say, on behalf of all the county employees, hundreds and well above the thousand mark, if you include the past ones, which I'd like to do as well, but on behalf of all of them and me, it's been an honor to work with you, and as I said yesterday, your impact will live on for a long, long time in Leon County, probably only to be outlasted by the stories that we tell about you, and you can bet that we're gonna do that a lot around here, but it's been an honor for me, Herb, thank you so much for everything you've done for me, tough to sit up here beside the legends, so again, thank you, Herb, enjoy a well-earned retirement, third act, right, Commissioner Minor?
Third act.
Thank you, second act, maybe.
All right, I'll round it up here real quick, Appalachian Regional Park was great, the kickoff, Red Hills was great, Herb, you will be sorely missed, you have been a rock star, and I gotta tell you, I don't know how it's gonna be up here without you here, so we'll miss you, it was, it's a great ride, and I wish you the best in retirement, I got one ask, when I was in DC last week, I ran into a friend of mine who's working for a company, they've got some algorithm that goes out and basically runs scans on people that are renting property, and it's a way basically to find vacation rentals that we're not collecting sales tax on, but it goes a step further, because most of the Airbnbs and the people that are out there doing that are reporting that now, but what it also goes out and says, well, you got somebody over here in this neighborhood and they're renting a five-bedroom house, and guess what, they were only permitted for a two-bedroom house, and somebody somewhere has gone in and started making changes, and so there are potential upgrades in the value of the property and potential permitting mistakes, I'm just asking that staff take a look at it, bring it back, and see if there's something to it, they only get paid, from what I gather, if we see additional revenue, so there's no cost until it either drives additional vacation rental revenue, tax revenue, or permitting, or upgrades in their property values, so I'd just like staff to take a run at it, if that's so, if somebody would make a motion to that extent, so that we, I've got a motion, I've got a second, any other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, we are on break till 6 o'clock, public hearings, thank you.